Good afternoon, everyone, and happy St. Patrick's Day. Today is March 17th. The time is four, about 4:07 PM, and I'd like to call this Finance Committee meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. How would the committee like to proceed?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda before us.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda. Dr. Hummer.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you very much. We have five items for you this evening. With two of these items, we are asking to go to the full board for approval. We had three of them, but one of them, there is a timeline that we want to update you on, which we'll address here in a second. So the first item, which is an action item, is we have a couple contract awards that we want you all to take into consideration to get moved to the full board for approval. Then we have some updates with our FY '26 budget. We want to review where we currently are. We have some updates in regards to calendar, as well as some other items with some information that we've received from the county and the state. So we want to provide you with updates there. Then, as requested, you all wanted to see additional information about our school nutrition program, specifically CEP. So we have some additional numbers that we want to share with you all, as well as the process, and then answer any additional questions that you have. The one item that was initially an item for action, but we are going to talk through some timelines with the state as some supplemental appropriation for some additional dollars for employee bonuses. So we want to talk through that and what that's going to look like. And then we also have two full-time FTEs for the new data sciences program at Dal J. We want to get ahead of hiring those positions. No local funds required because it's coming from the grant for that program. So with that, hand it over to Mrs. Anderson and her team. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Erskine.
All right, so we'll jump right in and get to business. The first that we have on our agenda is a recommendation for a contract award for our Millbrook High School tennis court project in the amount of $405,930, an award to vendor Miller Sports Construction.
Excellent. All right, these Miller Sports folks must be on their game. We've been awarding them a lot of contracts lately to resurface and revamp a lot of our facilities. So we have a recommendation.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend to the full board a contract award to Miller Sports Construction for the Millbrook High School tennis court in the amount of $405,930.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve this request. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Yeah.
Quick question to you, Dr. Hummer. This tennis court project, are there going to be any upgrades to the tennis court that would require us to further upgrade other tennis courts in the schools, since we have to keep all of the schools symbiotic?
My understanding is no, because this is more of safety. There's a lot of cracks and damages that we have to replace. And Mr. Davis can chime in on additional questions. And I appreciate you asking that, but that's not the case. It's not going to, we're not putting a dome around it and making it Wimbledon-style ready. This is to make sure that it's up to par in regards to safety standards, and Mr. Davis can chime in on that.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair, committee members. This is simply just a resurface back to the original that it was. It's not any better than any other tennis court across the county.
Okay.
So.
It's not clay courts?
Not this time, no. No clay, no grass, none of that.
Okay.
No domes.
No domes.
So.
All right. Thank you. I was just curious, because I know we have to maintain those standards for all of our sport fields. It's kind of a Title IX thing, I believe, isn't it?
I think it's a VHSL thing as well.
Well, that wouldn't necessarily be Title IX if it's the boys and the girls tennis courts. We would just be essentially creating an inequity in regards to our three high schools.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, thank you.
To something Ms. Klein just said, VHSL is a standard for sports for high school, this meets that requirement.
Sure.
Same with the next thing we're going to bring up as well.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
I'll wait right here.
All right. All right, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Other discussion? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, so that moves us to our next recommendation for contract award for the Charando High School track surfacing project. We're recommending that the award go to Miller Sports Construction in the amount of $230,000.
All right. I don't have to recuse myself for this usage of this track 25 years ago with my track spikes on it, okay? So I know that's been cleared.
This is why we're replacing it.
I know. So many miles run on that track. Okay, excellent.
We can't say we didn't get our money's worth.
I know.
Yeah.
When was the last time it was resurfaced? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know. It could have been...
Back in my day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, five years ago.
Five years, of course.
No, I do not know.
Well done. Well done.
We'll give you a piece of it while we're cutting it out.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I move that we award to Miller Sports Construction, sorry, that we recommend to the full board the contract award to Miller Sports Construction for the Charando High School track resurfacing in the amount of $230,000.
Second. All right, we have a recommendation, and it's been seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, sorry, I promise I won't do this. Well, I may, but correct me if I'm wrong, this is going to be done in June? So it won't be for this school year? It'll be for the following school year?
Correct. We're targeting summertime for this.
Gotcha. Okay, and how long do you think it'll take to...
Probably a month, start to finish.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this takes us to our third recommendation for a contract award, our third and final. We are recommending an award to Maxim Healthcare Services Holdings for temporary staffing services. You'll see here an award amount of $1 million. That's an estimated annual award amount. And this is to help us staff vacant teaching positions, as well as for both special education as well as general education. We also have our esteemed colleagues from HR here, should you have any additional questions about this contract.
Great question. Go for it.
Do just one HR question, if that's okay. Are these instructional positions, are these aides? Because I see it's coming from a healthcare staffing is the reason I'm asking.
So the contract that we are writing is for Maxim Healthcare Services. They're now Emerges Healthcare Staffing. That's why both names are there, but they are educational instructional positions. The ones that we have been targeting have been the critical shortage positions listed by the VDOE, as well as special instructional assistants. So they started with healthcare, but they have expanded there.
So this is just really their name, their trade name?
Correct.
They started in healthcare. They've expanded.
They've started in one place, and they've kind of expanded. There are many companies that have kind of done that, because education, we need the help with the staffing.
Okay, got it. So just purely, just to make sure I recap for folks listening, because you bring up a valid point, just purely instructional aid positions and teaching positions, general ed, special ed?
That's what this is for, yes. It's general education, special education, as well as special instructional assistance.
And special instructional assistance.
Yes.
And if I remember correctly, these are the folks that are recruiting abroad. Is that correct?
These are not recruiting abroad. They do have recruiters that are outside of our state. They go across the country, but they are not recruiting abroad.
Okay, that answers that.
No questions? All right.
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we recommend to the full board a contract award to Maxim Healthcare Services Holdings Incorporated, disregarded entity, Emerges Healthcare Staffing, Inc., in the amount of $1 million.
Second. All right, we have a recommendation. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, an FY '26 budget update. So just to put in front of you the remaining timeline on our budget calendar, Dr. Hummer and myself will be participating in a county Board of Supervisor budget work session this Wednesday. And then the next thing on the agenda is the county's budget public hearing, which will happen on March 26th, which we have recently sent them information that we'll review here shortly in the presentation to advertise for their public hearing, which includes not only their tax rate, but also all county and school financial funds in that advertisement. Our governor has until Monday, March 24th, to veto any actions from the General Assembly, and then the General Assembly reconvenes April 2nd to respond to any actions of the governor. You have a school board finance committee meeting upcoming on April 3rd, and we're hoping that the county budget timeline stays on track for an April 9th budget adoption by our Board of Supervisors. And then that would leave an April 14th full school board budget work session, as well as a school board final adoption on the FY '26 budget scheduled for April 22nd. So if you recall, going up to, until we learned recently from the General Assembly of additional state funds that may be provided for Frederick County schools for next year, we received information from the Virginia Department of Education, what we refer to as our CAC tool, that will update with projected student enrollment numbers to get an idea of what the General Assembly actions mean for us from a state funding perspective. So up until that point, the school board's proposed budget to fully fund that proposal requested almost, or just over $8.6 million from the county Board of Supervisors to fully fund it. The General Assembly came through with $3.3 million more dollars for Frederick County schools. Therefore, that reduces the ask of the Board of Supervisors for operating fund down to just over $5.3 million to fully fund that proposal. So here's what we know about estimated county revenue at this point. We attended a county finance committee meeting last Wednesday, and during that meeting, various scenarios were discussed. So we learned from that meeting that they have set aside money to fully fund our debt service obligations. And then they discussed $4.1 million more for our school operating fund in their scenarios. So if you remember, on the previous slide, to fully fund, it would require $5.3 million. So automatically, that represents about a $1.2 million shortfall in the operating budget. We also learned that there's discussion of providing us $4 million from the county's capital projects fund for our capital projects. And if you recall, the school board proposal was almost a $15 million ask. So the county is advertising a 48-cent real estate tax rate, and the current rate is set at 51.
Ms. Anderson, just to make sure I understand this correctly, can you go back one more slide?
Please, yep.
So we are hoping, we have the CAC tool from the state, wonderful. However, that CAC tool is producing that $3.3 million right now that the state is going to come in with, with more funds. That's a $3.3 million that we didn't think we would have until the CAC tool was produced. That is still yet to be approved, though. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the best information that we know at this time.
So right now, we hope, we hope that we get that $3.3 million.
Yes.
Okay. And if we do get that $3.3 million, then we will only be asking for $5.3 from the locality.
That's correct.
If we get the $3.3 million.
That's correct.
Big if. Okay. Thank you. Hope we get that.
Yep.
So we will, and refresh my memory on the timeline, we will know for sure when we get that $3.3 million on what date?
The governor has until next Monday.
Next Monday? Okay.
To make any adjustments to the General Assembly's adopted budget.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, so at the risk of poking a bear, the timeline that we have and the funding that we need, from my understanding, the Board of Supervisors and Treasurer and others involved don't necessarily know exactly how much they're going to be getting. Is that correct? Based on what transpired at your meeting and what we've been reading in the newspaper? And so I'm not, this is not a gotcha moment. I'm sincerely asking, how do we know how much they're going to be getting from revenues, number one? And number two, if they get less, which is what they're projecting than what they thought they were going to get, are we sure we're going to be provided $4.1 million for the school operating fund and $4 million for the capital projects? And is the, I have a lot of questions in this, is the timeline going to be different than what it currently is based on this information?
So let's start with the latter part of your question, but before I do that, Mrs. Anderson and I were invited to attend that meeting last Wednesday. We're also invited to attend the meeting this Wednesday. So that's the first part of that. The latter part of your question is, that did come up explicitly about the timeline of where they are, and they said that this would not change the timeline, that they're still on track to approve this by, I think it was the middle of April, correct?
April 9th.
April 9th. So we're still on track for that to happen.
Okay.
There are timelines that the county has to abide by in regards to advertising, and there are certain numbers they can't go above, but they can always go less, and that is with the tax rate.
Yes.
What they've shared with us is the advertised appropriation could go up or down. Now, we were previously told that it couldn't, but now they're saying that it can. So that is where we are hopeful that we will get exactly what we were requesting.
Ah.
Now, the last part of your question is, I think that's why there's another meeting for this Wednesday, because that was not discussed or determined, and they weren't able to come up with a number of where they were, because there was a lot of back and forth. So we're hopeful this Wednesday, those numbers will be more clear for the entire county.
So just to confirm what you've just said, we're sort of at a 1-point-whatever-million-dollar shortfall from what we want versus what they've originally said we'd get. Is that correct?
1.2, yes.
1.2. And you're saying, Dr. Hummer, that there could be room for them to give us the 1.2 based on your conversations with them at the previous meeting?
Well, what they were sharing.
What they were sharing, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So we may be fully funded if the governor doesn't veto, and if the Board of Supervisors fines their dollar amounts.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Okay.
Lot of ifs.
Yes, and like I said, I just, I mean, I want to understand it. I'm sure the people out there don't understand it and are wondering, you know, what's happening.
Right. Well, we have essentially done our part. The way I see this is we, FCPS, Mrs. Anderson, Dr. Hummer and his team, they have done their part of saying, this is what we need, and this board has approved a number to go downtown. Now, where I start to have consternation is the discussions that I think are happening behind the scenes of, well, the school board, we're only going to allow, we're only going to appropriate X amount, when it's not, when we have actually taken a number downtown that we have debated over, and we have come to an agreement that this is our needs-based budget, this is the number that we need. Now, my hope is that the $3.3 million is solidified, and so that we only need to ask the BOS for $5.3? But there's still a lot of ifs. My fear is that the BOS will change, and when I say BOS, I mean not just the seven on the deck, but the entire staff will say, well, they only need $5.3, because they're going to get $3.3 from the state, and then automatically lower us. That's what I fear.
Yeah.
We, I want, I'm glad we went in with the 8.3, because that's what we need. And if we don't get the 3.3 from the state, we don't get the 3.3 from the state. And we'll just have to deal with it from there.
Madam Chair, can I have one more piece, too?
Yes.
So as you've just stated, we asked for 8.6, and that is what you all...
I said 8.3, apologies.
Oh, did you? No, no, it's okay. And that's what you all approved for us to send downtown. If you also recall, we were speculating we were going to get some more money from the state, and in good faith, we were going to reduce our ask from the locality.
Yes.
We don't have to do that. We could have asked for the 8.6 and gotten the additional 3, and used that somewhere else. But again, we're trying to be good stewards of our dollar. We are trying to keep that positive relationship, so that is why we went ahead and reduced the amount of the ask from the locality, because we were getting more money from the state. That's a really big point that I also want to draw attention to as well.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Yep.
So just for transparency purposes, here you can see on this slide, to help with the county budget advertisement on their tax rate, remember I said that we have to provide all of our financial fund information for this advertisement? So here's what we provided to the county for the advertisement regarding our operating fund. So that first column is what we sent downtown, which would fully fund your budget proposal. And as Dr. Hummer said, in good faith, remember you asked for 8.6 million, but because of the anticipated 3.3 additional from the state, we reduced that ask of the county to 5.3. So, but you see on the far-right column, this is what the county sent to the paper to advertise. So it doesn't include the additional 3.3 that we're getting from the state, and it reduces our ask to 4.1. That's that $1.2 million shortfall. So in total, the two scenarios are very different. There's a spread of $4.5 million. Okay, and again, this is just for transparency, and as Dr. Hummer said, we will learn more on Wednesday, and we will keep you abreast along the process. So as you said, that we learned that they're talking about sending us $4 million for our capital projects, and if you recall, your budget proposal was $15 million. So $4 million would get us those first eight higher priority projects that you see there. Everything else would have to be considered at a later time when funds are identified.
Madam Chair, if I may, quick question to you. Maybe this is a facilities question, but is this list, I know it's in order of need, like most needed first, has that need changed at all since this was put together? Is there something in the other parts of this cap project sheet that needs to be funded now and has moved up the list?
So this list is in priority need. It's still active the way we want it, so nothing has come about or needed to take the place of this list right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great.
And then it's just the second page of the request. So if there are no other questions on capital projects, we'll move to the next part of our agenda on the school nutrition fund, and I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Curry, our Director of School Nutrition Services.
All right. Sorry if my voice cracks. All right, we're going to talk about CEP, which means Community Eligibility Provision. First, what does it do? It allows our schools in low-income areas to provide access to breakfast and lunch at no cost to all our students. It eliminates the burden of collecting household applications to determine eligibility for school meal programs. Who does it benefit? Most important, our students. Our students are able to have access at no cost to them, a free nutritious meal, our parents, who feel confident that a student, that the meals are included as part of the instructional day without the burden of the household application, and then also our school staff and administrators as far as streamlined meal service operation, reduced paperwork, and no tracking of unpaid meal charges. Who can participate? This number has changed a few times. Right now, our minimum identified student percentage is at 25%. When we adopted our first nine, it was at 40%. And identified students are those who are certified for free meals without the use of household applications. So those are students who are receiving SNAP benefits, TANF, some Medicaid. Here is our income eligibility guidelines for 24, 25... TANF, some Medicaid. Here is our income eligibility guidelines for 24, 25 school year. If you look at a household size of four, a family that earns $57,720 is eligible. If they earn $1 more than that, they are not eligible for those benefits. As far as the difference between a CEP school and a non-CEP school, the CEP schools are the ones who have a significant amount of those students who are receiving SNAP, TANF, Medicaid. Non-CEP schools will still have those students, but they also will receive household applications. Our federal reimbursement rates for the 24, 25 school year, for lunch, every free meal, we receive $4.43 for lunch. If you go down and you look at paid, it drops down to 42 cents. This is a slide we've gotten from USDA. So we use the 40% ISP because that's what we initially were looking at when we adopted our nine schools. At 40% ISP, they use a multiplier of 1.6. So that means 64% of our students will be reimbursed at a free rate and then 36 at the paid rate.
And Ms. Curry, if you could just clarify, too, like that's what, 40% is what we were looking at at the 90 CEP schools when we approved the nine CEP schools. Now, in order to be eligible for CEP, it's down to 25%?
It is, yes.
Okay. And the federal government right now is looking to increase that to 60%?
60%, yes. That's in talks right now.
Excellent, thank you.
We took the opportunity, because of the questions you had last meeting, to look at a couple of different schools from years 16, 17, and compare them to 24, 25. So before COVID, before we had any of the CEP schools, we looked at James Wood Middle School and also Middletown Elementary. You can see there's a significant increase in the participation rates. If you're looking at breakfast in particular, James Wood Middle School went from 14% up to 39 for breakfast, and then lunch, 58% to 77. And that is with their enrollment actually lowering due to a redistricting. And then Middletown, they've had a major increase in enrollment, but their participation for breakfast has jumped to 47%, and then also lunch, 68%. Another big increase, if you look at James Wood Middle School, in 2016, 17 timeframe, they had 300 students that were eligible for free, and that has jumped to 612. I'm handing it back over to Ms. Anderson.
So in that same spirit, comparing back to 2017 when we had no school CEP compared to our most current full year, 2024, when we had nine of our schools CEP, we wanted you to be able to see financial and performance indicators for the entire school nutrition fund in the aggregate. So we tried to bring it down on a per meal basis to make it a more apples-to-apples comparison. So, you know, this is looking at the revenue side or the sources of funds for our school nutrition program. So you can see there that our federal reimbursement per meal, and that's just taking our total federal reimbursement dollars divided by the number of meals that we served that year to get an average federal reimbursement per meal rate. You can see that grew by 65%. That's a function of the federal government increasing those rates over the year, realizing that costs increase each year, as well as a function of that is we have more students between those two time periods. Our eligibility for free and reduced has grown as well. And then the remaining revenue sources that we get are sales to students and staff and state reimbursement. You can see that that decreased, which is not surprising because now we have nine schools that are CEP, so we're not collecting money from those students. So that gets you to a total revenue per meal that we received last year was $4.32, a 29% increase to 2017. Also on this slide, you can see that our lunch participation and breakfast participation in the program drew, or grew significantly. And so we had a 20% increase in the number of meals that we served on any given day. So now let's look at the cost side of the program, still on a per meal basis. So it's no surprise that our greatest costs for school nutrition are both labor and food. And you can see how that has changed compared to the two time periods of 2017 to 2024. So labor costs, you can see a 33% increase. That's largely due to some major investments that we have made in those salary scales, well-deserved investments in those salary scales. As well as, if you come down to the bottom of the slide, the second row from the bottom, you can see that we grew by four positions over that same time period. However, our productivity rate, our meals per labor hour, we also became more efficient, serving more meals for every labor hour. Our food costs, no surprise there. I think everybody is experiencing this. We've seen some inflation in our food costs. And then everything else is just categorized in this all other costs per meal. You see an increase there, but it's not a typical increase because that does represent some one-time capital costs that we had in school year 2024. So just in real simple terms, if you look at 2024, our cost per meal was $4.80. But if you go back to the previous slide, we collected $4.32 per meal. So that's why this, why the school operating fund is helping to subsidize this program.
So Ms. Anderson, this is, so this is where my head is on this. So first of all, just to clarify, FCPS has never turned away a student who goes through the meal line for a meal, whether it's breakfast, whether it's lunch, ever, CEP or no CEP. We've never turned away a student. If we did, we would have a much different conversation right now because that would be a massive problem. What I see with this, though, is that 58% increase. So I hear, hear from a business perspective, this is what, this is what I request of your team and of Dr. Hummer and you as well. We have numbers, the debt service fund, to clearly back up, the debt service fund currently cancels out or covers the school meal debt. So last year, it was around $250,000, or was it 150,000? It's 150,000. That was last year. It's 150,000 out of the debt service fund to cover the unpaid meal balances. The year before that is around 40,000.
60,000.
60,000. Okay. So we have 60,000, we have 150,000 last year, and this year we're on track for how much?
300 to 400,000.
Let's make it 400, just to make the math easy for, for me up here doing math in public. So we went from 60 to 150 to, let's call it 400,000 this year. We have data that probably goes back further than that. What I would like to see is a year-over-year increase, and I understand we've had inflation, we've had all of those things, but what I am looking at is the debt service fund because here's where I'm going with this. I would like to see an analysis of the year-over-year increase out of the cost of the debt service fund, and then at what point would we break even at the $2.1 million mark, which is what we talked about last year, in extending CEP to all 21 schools? Because if I can justify to the taxpayer, with this program where we're receiving those federal funds, and we have a break-even point where it's equal costing, whether the money's coming out of the debt service fund, which is taxpayer dollars, or it's coming out of CEP, which is federal dollars, arguably still taxpayer dollars, but none of us on this day can control that. But all we, all we know is it's coming from the federal government. If I can get a break-even analysis, then I can, then I can justify this. But until then, all I see is a 58% increase in our costs here to the taxpayers of Frederick County. If I can get to that break-even point, that's where this board member needs to get to, to advocate for it. And then at that point, we can advocate for all 21 schools with a break-even of whatever year the math shows. And I understand it could fluctuate. I understand that this is a, a break-even analysis is not exact. It's what businesses do every day to try to, try to justify costs, whether they're going to invest in something or not. For example, Mrs. Frakely's $400,000 HR program that we're, we really want, I understand that that's $400,000. That's a lot of money right now. However, we will break even easily with that very shortly, and then probably increase our, have more free, what's the term I'm looking for, free capital, if you will, to invest in other programs. I understand that. I get it, which is why I approve that in the budget. That's what I need to see here. If we can break even at some point, then I can justify it to the taxpayer.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I actually have a couple of questions, clarifying questions. So the 58% increase from 2016, 17 to 23, 24, is that because of CEP?
It's not all because of CEP.
Okay.
It's largely due to the investments we've made in the school nutrition salary scales, the well-deserved investments we've made, as well as our food costs are greater.
Sure.
Regardless of the, even if we served more meals, on a per meal basis, the costs are rising.
Would you be able to ballpark exactly how much more percentage-wise this costs the taxpayer to have these CEP programs from? I realize 2016, 17, you're looking at almost eight years difference. It would be interesting to, and I, I get why you did that because it's pre-COVID. I'm just curious as to what the leap has been as far as the up, the amount that it's cost to the taxpayer, has, has it increased a great deal year-over-year? Does that make, does what I'm asking make sense?
It does make sense, but it's something that I, we'd like to get back to you on.
Of course. No, I, I, yeah, it's not anything I assumed you could do now. The other thing, this is for Madam Chairman, the 60% possibility that may be coming through is going to make this entire issue moot.
Exactly.
M double O to, M double O T, Ms. Jordan. So if that does go through, it's moot court. It's a legal term. She knows what I'm talking about. All right, anyway, so it's frustrating.
Yeah.
Because we're almost there. We're almost there in showing our constituents that this program is not the boondoggle they think it is. And I think when you get your data that you're asking for, which is, I, I, I thank you for asking for that because I think that would be extremely helpful to see how 21 schools could work and at what point do we break even. We're almost there and it's almost like one step forward, two steps back kind of thing. Anyway, that being said, my other question to you is, are the, is the food that we purchase, is that contracted? Is it a fixed cost or is it variable?
We do receive bid pricing from our vendor, and that is what we use. We also get a portion of commodity dollars that we use on fresh fruits and vegetables, and then some other commodities, mostly proteins.
Now, is any of that locally sourced?
We do get apples from Whittaker Farms here locally in the Shenandoah Valley, and there are some other vegetables through the Favors program, which is the commodity program, and that just is seasonal.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, just have a question about that ball, bottom row. Can somebody explain or maybe give me an example, what, what would one of these one-time capital costs per meal be?
That was improvements to the James Wood Middle School cafeteria.
So these are, so actual construction, they, oh, got it. Okay.
As well as some major equipment purchases, too, for our kitchens can be there as well.
One last thing, I promise. So I did a little experiment. I stopped paying my daughter's lunch fees, and I'm going to pay them, I promise. I know you won't come after me, but I'm going to pay them. I just want to share with you and the public that it started out when I got within $5 of being out of money, that I received an email saying, this is your first warning or indication, warning, I think it was, that you're running low on your, my school bucks for lunch meals. And then about a week later, I got a second warning, and then third, this is your final warning. And now I'm getting them every three days, emails to ask for me to put money back in. And I'm, I start sweating when I look open my email to see these. And I'm just wondering, you know, how is this, those, those kids that are, those parents that are not able to pay for their kids' meals or not paying for their kids' meals, I mean, I wonder how they feel about it. I don't, I'm wondering if there's a different kind of messaging we can use or if there's a different way we can go about this. And I'm, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't try to get the money, recuperate the money because I think we should. I'm just wondering if, if there's a better way. And, you know, maybe some of these people don't care. They just, it goes to their spam folder. They just ignore it, but...
I think that's part, I think you care.
I do. It's scaring the crap out of me. My wife is like, pay it, pay it. So I'll pay it tonight. Don't worry.
Human, it's hard to quantify human behavior.
Yeah.
I think you care, and I think a lot of those parents who have those oops moments are like, oh, shoot, I didn't pay it. I need to put more money on the account. I think there are those parents that are like you that are out there. There are also those parents out there that probably don't check their email.
So maybe, yeah.
There's some studies out there that I've just read, you know, via, whether it's Harvard Business Review or others, that say that email is kind of becoming more of that, oh, what's the right word? It's kind of falling on deaf ears. Text message is now the thing that gets people's attention. And eventually, the, the article that I read said, well, at what point do we get people's attention if text messages become, go the way of email, where it just becomes, you become numb to it?
Shock therapy.
I know Dr. Erskine and I were talking back in our day when we walked across, you know, we couldn't walk across the stage at graduation if we had an open account balance.
Same.
Right.
And do we practice that same thing?
Well, we asked, so, so I asked about that question, and I'll bring it up here. I thought I brought it up on the last Finance Committee meeting. Maybe I didn't, but I'll bring it, bring it up again. We, I actually asked that question because back in the day, back in our day, we couldn't walk across the stage. We didn't graduate. We, I don't even think we got our diploma.
Nope.
I mean, there was nothing. So that, several years back, Richmond State Legislature made that essentially illegal for school districts to do.
Okay.
So we can't go to, to parents and try to collect those unpaid meal balances, those unpaid activities funds balances, whatever other balances that may be outstanding. It is illegal for FCPS to send a family to collections essentially to recoup that, those funds, hence why our debt service is now covering our meal funds. I don't, I can't speak to the other outstanding debts that, that students may have, but I can, can speak to the meal balance. Back in our day, that wouldn't have been a thing because people wouldn't have walked. This is a Richmond thing. Yeah. When you run for delegate, you change that. When you run and win. There you go. So, yeah. But we did ask that question. Thanks for bringing that up.
All right. So we'll move on to the next part of our presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Seibert.
So these are some additional state funds for this current school year.
Ms. Seibert, if I can interrupt your train of thought for one moment, we just had a question. Can you go back to the very last slide, Ms. Anderson?
Sure.
There was a bullet there that I was rudely whispering about because I didn't understand it. Sorry.
Yeah, the school, if CEP is removed at nine schools and families do not fill out the free reduced price meal application, school nutrition operations become less efficient. Can we quantify that, too? Because if it's less efficient, if the operations become less efficient, that's a cost.
Yep.
That's a human capital cost. That is, I, I'm throwing things out here. A human capital cost, it's probably a logistical cost. If we can get my break-even analysis as well as define less efficient for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you, Ms. Seibert. Sorry to interrupt your train of thought.
So we're going to the current school budget. So the General Assembly has provided some additional state funding for a one-time employee bonus payment that will need to be paid out by June 1 of 2025. The funding is based on a $1,000 bonus per instructional and support position. Our school divisions do have the discretion to determine the amount of the bonus to maximize the use of the state funds. So the total cost of the $1,000 bonus is estimated to be 2.5 million for us, with approximately 1 million in unobligated surplus operating funds. If the board did not want to use the unobligated surplus funds, it would be about a $600 bonus for our employees.
And the state doesn't give us full funding for a $1,000 for everybody because it's based on SOQ positions, instructional and support, and we employ more than, than SOQ?
The next slide is the recommendation for the bonus criteria. So it would be a $1,000 bonus for all of our full-time contracted employees. So it would be a $1,000 bonus for all of our full-time contracted employees who are currently with us that started before the second semester, which was January 6th, and all of our long-term substitutes who have, who have worked all of our instructional days, which is 167 days this year. We'll do a $500 bonus for all full-time employees who started after the second semester, after January 6th. Our part-time contracted employees with a higher date prior to January 6th who are fulfilling their contract. Our long-term substitutes who have worked half of the 167 days or 83 days. And then any part-time employees who have started after January 6th. The caveat is, the governor still can veto this until March 24th. So the recommendation, I believe we decided on, is that we were going to delay this until the April 3rd meeting.
No, and I agree with that. And I want this $1,000 for our folks as much as, as they do. But just to make sure that with all the flux going on that we have right now, not only in our local government, but at the state level regarding the budget, I just want to make sure if we say yes to this, that we actually do get the funds for it. So that's my reasoning is my, where my head is as well, Mrs. Seibert, Mrs. Anderson, if we could delay this definitely to the April 3rd Finance Committee meeting. April 3rd is also my birthday, so this would be a fantastic birthday gift to me to be able to approve this for our staff. So April 3rd, 4-3, I'll also be the big 4-3, just, you know, throwing that out there. So, but yes, I think that's a wise move, let's, I think we should delay this definitely. So Ms. Jordan, since this is just a recommendation, do I need to make a motion to delay, delay this item definitely, or can we just have it as a discussion point and then have it on the agenda for the next Finance meeting?
There's no action that you need to take, we can just put it on the next, the next meeting agenda.
Perfect, thank you.
We look forward to celebrating your birthday with you.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So this leads us to the next and final action that we're asking for tonight. We are requesting the addition of two full-time equivalent positions to support our data lab school at Dal J. Howard. There are no local funds with these positions. It is funded by our partnership with George Mason University through the Data Lab School.
Love it.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend the full board a request for two data lab school teacher full-time equivalent positions.
Second. All right, we have a motion for the recommendation, it's been seconded, any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our presentation for this evening. We talked about the contract awards, an update to the FY '26 budget, which will keep you updated as we learn more this week, as well as we talked about School Nutrition and some deliverables on a break-even analysis, and we'll be happy to get that. And we've talked about the delay on the employee bonuses as well as the addition of two full-time equivalent positions.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody, Mr. Bell, Dr. Erskine, any other? Okay, fantastic. Well, looks like that concludes our agenda. How would the committee like to proceed?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn our meeting.
All right, second. And we have a motion for adjournment, it's been seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.